Every place I looked during the storm, there was somebody out, somebody doing something. Every place I turned, the police, fire, your staff, Aaron, you were here for hours on end, right?
Yes.
And, you know, just amazing job. We're really proud of you all. And I tell you, it's out there in the public that you guys did a wonderful job too, so thank you so much.
Anything on anyone's mind else? Any other thing? Okay, let's move to council business.
Public? You want to hear from the public?
They just denied. Matt? Sorry.
Matthew Todd, 5113 Mallett Drive. I want to thank the police chief and the vice mayor for opening this up because we stayed back. And I'm disappointed in some ways and I'm appreciative in some ways. Police chief did an outstanding job and the vice mayor was out doing whatever he could do and whatever the mayor could do. And there was a little bit of hostility set about opening this place up for the residents to come in as a shelter. Well, we lost the power poles and it went down and became a hazard situation to get out of there. Police chief came down and the police captain and told us that we could come up here and stay and by God, thank God that they did. But then they were getting some hostility kicked back from other management positions in here. And what needs to be done is, is some of the people that's working in this city building needs to address one thing. They work for us, is what they need to realize. Us as the taxpayers pay all these city salaries. And what needs to be addressed with this budget stuff is, there's some jobs in here and management positions that need to be cut. We don't need. That money should go toward the police department and the fire departments where it goes. Because that man there and that man there, they did their job. And that's what needs to be taken care of. And the utility. I want to thank you too, Chris. Thanks.
Sir? Anyone else in the public? Bring it to council again. Any thoughts on this? Any thoughts on what we're here?
I will have comments on that, but I don't think it's appropriate to discuss it during the budget hearing.
Okay. Resolution one, millage rate.
I'll take it there.
Please go ahead.
This is the formal budget hearing and I do appreciate Councilman Rose's comments. It's somewhat inappropriate to discuss any other issues. It's probably the most serious meeting of the year. This is resolution seventeen dash ten, which I'll read by title in a minute, but the final levy is seven.
Five point seven five one eight.
It's the only one I have in here.
Page thirteen.
Thirteen? Why is it above what? Thirteen, okay. Resolution seventeen ten. This is the final millage rate. It's the final levy of five point seven five one eight mils will result in a zero percent increase in the rollback rate of five point seven five one eight. That's, so we're not raising, we're going with the rollback rate. We're not increasing taxes. This is a resolution adopting the millage rate for the city of Port Ritchie for the fiscal year commencing on October first, 2017, and ending on September thirtieth, 2018. Looking for a motion to approve.
Motion to approve resolution seventeen dash eleven.
Second.
Motion is second. Take it to the public. Any thoughts?
Seventeen dash ten.
Seventeen.
Five seven five one eight. Is that correct?
Five point seven five one eight. Yes, sir.
Let me, let me, let me, let me go back and redo that. Motion to approve resolution seventeen dash ten.
And second again?
Second.
Okay, resolution is, I won't make you explain the rollback rate again.
I will if you want.
This means that there is no increase or this is an increase?
Means no increase.
No, not, it's.
The amount of taxes.
Hundred dollars more in case it was nothing, no changes made?
Overall in the city, the amount of taxes you paid last year will be the same as this year. Now, some houses may have gone up and gone down, but overall in the city, this is no additional revenue to the city being taxed against its residents or businesses.
Well, it's one goal made. Anybody in the?
Yay, thank you.
Okay, we have a motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Passes unanimously. Okay, resolution number seventeen eleven. Do we have to?
What you're doing here is, at the budget hearings, we first set the millage rate, okay, which we just did, then we have to set our final budget. We do our budget in portions, so I'll do this five times, four times at this meeting, one at the CRA meeting. First one is the city administration budget. Seventeen eleven, a resolution by the city council of the city of Port Ritchie, Florida, setting the city administration budget for the fiscal year commencing October first, 2017 through September thirtieth, 2018. I'm looking for a motion to approve.
Motion to approve resolution number seven dash eleven.
Second for discussion?
Okay. I would like to ask one question, Jim. This budget, do we have a pie budget that shows how much were you, each department choosing on the, from the CRA like we?
Correct. I'd have to defer to the finance official whether we have one with us today or not. These are the exact same figures that were presented at the workshop.
I believe it showed a reduction at that point in time from sixteen to thirteen in CRA-funded employees.
Okay, so all of this general administrative fund is coming from Admiral?
Almost all of it is coming from Admiral. There are some that must come from CRA, but we've reduced the overall CRA dependence from sixteen percent down to thirteen percent, as I believe those are the correct numbers. So we're cutting back on the utilization of CRA funds for administration.
Terry, any thoughts while I try to figure out where I was? Oh, there's one thing I want to bring up. The police impound law. I keep, we've discussed this many times. Bill McGuire does this for the city of Port Ritchie and he's making money. And we are still on the Tom O'Neill, send them to Tampa. I don't believe it's the most efficient way. And I would like to agenda that at the next meeting. Protocol or discussion of city-impounded vehicle? That's really the only thing I remember.
Well, I guess it's my unpleasant duty to bring this up, but I've had several contacts from citizens in the city. And after doing some research myself, some were more kind than others in their words, but basically the problem here would be with the position that we have of assistant city manager. I will read the nicest one I got. This position, okay, where is it? It's just here. It's gone. It was gone. I don't know where it went. Can't read it. For some reason disappeared. Basically, they're saying that because of the charter, this position is a violation of our charter. And I did some research and we will have to ask the city attorney on this because there are many people, I think because of the fact that we gave Mr. Lupo a well-deserved raise, wonder why we are running an assistant as well. And they feel their dollars are being wasted. They also feel that it's a violation of the charter. It needs to be brought up because if we are in violation of the charter, I definitely want to fix that before we okay the funding for this position. So at this point, we have to discuss this, get some information on it before we finalize the budget.
You want to not fund the budget until we know we're not in violation?
Well, that would be the smart thing to do because you can get in a lot of trouble if you violate the charter.
Jim, do you have any legal input?
On the sole issue of whether a title of assistant city manager would violate the charter, I'd find that hard to believe, to be perfectly honest. You could call assistant manager, you know, I'm not sure how it would violate the charter. I don't know if there's a prohibition in the charter against having an assistant city manager. I know there's rules in the charter about if the city manager's disabled, sick, or something else, what the progression would be, but it's surely nothing that says it would be the assistant city manager. So I'd have to check it to be sure.
Yeah, I read through it myself after I got these and it is troubling because it doesn't name an assistant city manager. It says that someone can be appointed.
Yeah, that's my understanding.
So it's not a permanent job, is the way that goes down. And we're, we just have to make sure we're on right footing here because.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure of that, but the fact that it's called assistant city manager doesn't in and of itself preclude, state that in the disability of the city manager, the assistant city manager would take over, the charter would prevail?
It doesn't state that in the charter though.
The charter states that if the city manager's disabled or unable to work, a certain process starts, right?
When he's out, he appoints someone.
He appoints someone, yeah.
So the problem that I'm having with the residents is the fact that we have a full-time position and we have a sitting city manager who is fully functioning. That's a problem.
Yeah, I'm just saying from a legal standpoint, the perception of it, I can't, I'm not addressing, I'm just saying, do I think it's a violation of a charter to have a position called that? Probably not, you know, but you can call it whatever you like. But with regard to the position and the perception and all of that, you know, but just to have that position called that, you know, sure, there's nothing about having.
What does our protocol say then, Jim? Is the assistant city manager automatically in charge of the city when?
No, that's, that's my point, just the opposite. The city manager, if the city manager is disabled or unable to do his duties or something, I know this language there as to what happens. To make the presumption that it would go to the assistant city manager, I think would be wrongful from a legal perspective.
If I might, Mayor, not approving the overall budget for an issue that can be discussed and resolved at a later date is counterproductive. Simply approving the budget still allows for differentiation at some future date. Clarification, if you will, from, from the perspective of the charter and implementation is, can be addressed again at a later date, but with, stopping the approval of a whole budget for, for a single issue seems counterproductive to me at this time.
I really don't want to hold it up any, as well, but I've had the same input as Terry.
I think we all probably got the same email. I know I did.
I didn't.
I didn't. We got left out. We're too old. But I previously have had that. And I'll tell you folks, this city's 2,400 people and I love our staff, I do. But how many staffs, how many staff, how many positions can we expect the tax holders to hold? We did hold taxes down mainly because of Mr. Lupo saving $800,000, Mr. Bill saving $160,000, Jim about $600,000, I believe. But, but there is a time and a point where 2,400 people can't support X amount, there's somewhere there's V-max. And we need to figure that out because this is, you know, I go through this, FICA, overtime, regular salaries, salaries and wages, retirement, health insurance.
Counselor, if I might.
Please.
We put together, we put together a budget with the existing staff and we wound up reducing the millage. And we've stated earlier in several earlier meetings that we are preparing and getting prepared for a change in the taxation structure with reference to homestead. Many communities are looking at cutting back positions, but that's, that would, that's requiring an evaluation that, as I stated to this council earlier, we would be doing. So that's actually a consideration for the upcoming process. To move forward now, what the staff that we currently have would be, you can, we can discuss the issue at a future date, but your budget is structured with, with the current existing staff. Those changes, any changes can be made. I have made changes since I've arrived here, but I think that that's something that we can discuss after we've done some analysis. So your, but your budget is prepared and it allows for certain latitudes. You certainly have other issues that you can address and I will give you an example. Last year, you had funds in the budget for raises for employees. That did not occur. You have funds for raises for employees this year. That may not occur subsequent to future dates. Changes within the administration is something that we can discuss at a future date, but with respect to your existing budget, it's pretty much, should be pretty much a moot issue at this point in time for discussion at a later date where we can go over the various issues. The position itself has many different functions, many different sides, many different facets. There are a lot more activities involved in that position and we can discuss that, I believe, at a clean, clear future, future time. But at this point in time, you have a, have a budget before you.
My main concern is violation of the charter. There evidently would have to be a line item in here somewhere that's covering the salary for an assistant city manager. I just need to know before I commit to this budget that I'm not breaking charter. That's the bottom line here. If it's, if it flies with charter, I have no problem, but the citizens are on this and some have said they'll report us if we don't fix this. We have to have a legal opinion on this, folks. And I can't, I'm not going to worry about this tonight. I'm going to go ahead with procedure because we have another hearing on this.
You should do on the 25th, sir.
But we have to fix this and know where we're at and know our standing before we get to the next budget hearing.
Okay. Well, I'm going to make another really silly comment. We have a $600 final budget for police bicycle maintenance. And I haven't seen a policeman on a bicycle. Anybody? No? This is $600. I don't know where it's going, but do we have a bicycle?
Eric drives one. He rides one around.
Does he? Did round. Does anyone else want to look through this or we just got to go, go yet? We got a motion is second. All in favor?
I don't think we had a motion, did we?
I've looked through it. Yeah, there's a few things like that in there, I think.
Yeah, I mean, we got more small equipment than anybody in Walmart. I think we have a motion is second. Anybody, we want to vote or talk?
I mean, there's contingency funds. There are other things in there that I think give some leeway to, to the city manager in case we need funds for other things. Like, you know, sometimes we throw something in and we want to put on something or do something, we need funds. I believe that's probably where they find them.
And the contingencies? In the future, I would just like a budget we could read. I mean, somehow, there must be some like budget for idiots and.
It's not that hard to read.
It's not? All right, let's just see how you are doing.
If I might, Mayor, we can certainly, we can certainly put a budget together in a different format, graphs, bars, charts.
Nancy, what's 502 miscellaneous for $2,000?
That's one of his contingencies.
Yeah, it ain't that easy.
That's what it is.
Okay.
The government uses $2,000 toilet seats, so I think that's probably the way they handle those things, but.
So addressing Councilman Rose concerned about the charter, this can be approved and that can be checked without that impacting us making a decision tonight?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, it's just, I brought it up because the citizens have brought it to me. They brought it evidently to all of you.
Yep.
So I'm not alone in this. And, and some were concerned enough to say they will report it if we proceed with a budget supporting, financially supporting that position. So I think we need to look into it.
Well, they should have reported us by now because we've been doing it for years.
Well, we may be doing it wrong for years, but 301 training, general administrative funds, $20,000. Where are we training them? Went from $5,000 to $20,000.
Well, there's a whole series of different requirements that require training and, and that training produces a better qualified staff. Police go to training, fire go to training. Without that, we're not, we're not familiar with OSHA laws. We have to go and research them, modern updates with respect to labor laws. So there's absolute necessity for training to send someone out, you know, without, without, it would cost us more to go out separately to get that information than if someone is trained to do it rather than hire someone specifically to do it.
So that all funded continuing education certifications for the city?
Yes, sir. Certifications, continuing education, built in, it's built into the system.
Yep.
One other thing I'd like to agenda next time. These street lights, most people are happy with them and they are bright and they are nice and they are illuminating my house when it's dark. And some people want, I think we'd have to have a protocol because some people would like their, to be shaded and some people want to make sure the bad guys aren't in. But I think Chief, you'd have to look at that and okay it. I mean, do we need to have every person eliminated by that street light agree or can it be shaded just away from certain houses?
I'm not aware of a protocol for street lights, but if you have an issue with it, you can certainly look and, look into it.
Okay. All right, we're going to do that now. You got that?
All right, we're at a budget meeting. We better do the budget at least.
Well, do the budget. I asked for the vote three or four times so far.
We already, I already did a motion and.
And a second.
And a second.
I said, do we want to talk or vote?
Okay, Terry brought that up, but I think we should proceed if he's.
You want to go ahead, Mr. Rose?
I think he's okay with that.
Yeah, we'll proceed because we need to get through this tonight.
All in favor?
But before I can give my approval on that final.
Okay.
Can I make a comment?
I'm going to need to know about this.
Please.
Okay, this is a budget that is set forward for the future, so it's nothing, not set in stone. It's, it is a framework from what this city is going to, to work from to make its, to make its expenses and to make its income and to use it wisely. I don't think any of it is, is in iron. I think that if, if one department has a difficulty, we're going to have to take from another department in order to balance that budget. I think that's the way it works in my home. I'm pretty sure that it probably works relatively the same. Some of these little things like the position of city manager, the street lights, the training and stuff like that, that's all something we can put on an agenda. This is just for the future. This is what we're working off of. And if we have specific ones, let's put them on an agenda for the council. I don't think that there's a violation in the charter and I've read those things till my eyes are bloody, bloody, I tell you. It's just a mess, but I don't think there's a violation in the charter that's going to say we have one line, line item in a budget that is going to cause that whole budget to be a problem. I just, it doesn't make sense.
No.
Because it's not, it's not a firm in-ground thing.
That's why I'm going forward, but where these monies are appropriated for that position, if you approve this budget, you are endorsing the money for the position of the assistant city manager. This is where the problem comes in and charters are not to be violated.
I don't see a violation.
And so if we don't have that written in there, and it is not, I looked through that thing last night trying to find any reference to that, there is none.
No, there is not anything in there that refers to a singular position, but there is nothing that says that he needs a secretary and he can't hire one if we have it in his budget. Or that guy needs somebody at water. That's not in, in a line item in here either. I understand what you're saying, but I don't think that we should be doing that now. I think we should address that at a later meeting and approve this budget because that's what we're going to work off of and then go to that.
Well, you're, you're welcome to do that, but I won't put my name to it if I don't have a solid answer on this position. And I don't believe that we are in the correct position if we, I mean, I've read through that. It doesn't say anything about a full-time assistant city manager or anything close to it. In fact, it lends itself to the fact that if the city manager is not available, he is to appoint someone at that point. Well, if you have an assistant city manager, you don't need to appoint anyone. So that is the language that is having problems.
Yes, he would. He would appoint the assistant city manager. He'd appoint the chief of fire, fire, the police department, he can appoint anybody wants to, just because we have an assistant city manager that is not automatically default to her.
Well, you can answer to the citizens because they're the ones that are having the problem with it.
Well, we had the same situation happen before when we didn't have somebody here and it had to default to somebody else and the choice was made and, you know, and it wasn't our assistant city manager. So we've been down this road.
I just don't want, I mean, the citizens are the ones that are having a problem.
Well, I've heard, I've heard from some myself, but I still don't have anything solid and firm.
Well.
I don't.
Regardless, though, we've already discussed that if this is approved right now, this is, becomes an administrative issue later, whether that's in the budget or not is a, but we want to know if we have violation of the charter in any way, so.
We can find that out otherwise.
Like I say, I don't have a problem going through tonight because this isn't finalized. We are moving toward the final.
Right.
But I want to make sure that we are proceeding correctly because I read through some email, some of the stuff on the web about violations of charter and it opens a can of worms to your city. I don't want that. We've had enough of these nightmares. I want to make sure if someone's going to cause trouble out there in the city, I want to head it off before we get there. And it's the only reason I bring it up tonight because it's an unpleasant task and I'm sure I'm going to catch hell for it from the staff, but it has to be put out.
I agree with you. I agree with you, but I have not seen or heard from any of those citizens from that and I would like to see it.
I don't know why you have.
Let's not worry about that at this point.
Is there any, Doc, maybe you should go to the.
The public. Would you guys like to talk? I know there's one back there that'd like to.
We got three.
Kathy Todd, 5113 Mallett Drive. And I know we're not stupid. A lot of these positions were created from the previous regime that was all about him and money and their situation. So some of these positions are ridiculous. We do not need them. If we get rid of some of them, won't that help the CRA? We won't be pulling from CRA because we don't need to be pulling from CRA. I don't think we need an assistant city manager. Our city manager should be able to do the job and then we have enough other smart people in here that can handle that. I don't want as a taxpayer, my money being wasted and a lot of people that we've talked to just spend it on something that isn't necessary. And that's from myself and several other, other members in the community. Thank you.
And that's what he's been dealing with. And so, uh, let me chat.
Chad Jassic, fifty one thirty four Miller Bayou Drive. This is the first I've heard of this problem with a city manager, assistant city manager. And just listening to everything going on, first of all, I like your comments. We need to cut back. Twenty-four hundred people in the city can't afford to have three thousand employees. So I, I like your comments. Um, I don't like seeing the budget being held up. I like what Jeannie said. You know, this is a framework. It's a framework. So not to hold the budget up, I see Terry's part also that, about the law. So everybody's got a valid point here. They really do. So we got to do something. And it sounds like, according to Jim Matthew, that if we pass this budget just the way it is now, next meeting, or you have a workshop to figure out if we need a assistant city manager or not, it gets cut off the budget and that money goes to someplace else. Okay? So I don't see a problem with the budget, but I do see a problem with having a city man, assistant city manager, with Vince getting a big raise. We've never had a city man, assistant city manager in the very, in the past, never had it before. And when we've had problems in the city with a city manager, they got appointed to either police chief or, or somebody else. Somebody got appointed to do it. So it's not a crisis situation of not having Vince here for a day or two days and he gets sick. So that's my two cents worth.
Thank you. Mr. Todd?
Matthew Todd, five one one three Mallett Drive. I think not just getting rid of the city, no offense against Jocelyn. I like the lady. But my honest opinion is that position needs to be cut and we don't need a HR person in here. That can be subbed out as well. There's a lot of jobs in here that can be subbed out outside. Don't we have Pete Chatzel come in here and discuss the budget and all the finances and all? So there's more payroll to where that can go toward helping the police department, the, the fire department and the utilities. Them people, these are the people that should get raises and, and, and should be taken care of. Them jobs need to be cut. We got too many chiefs and not enough Indians. These guys are all out in the fields doing their job. And, and we've talked to many a people. You need to cut what you can cut, and that's it. Thank you.
Well, thank you. Another?
Yeah, Pete Barnet, eighty-four twenty-eight Green Street. When the last election was brought about, these people came out and voted for these people on the council to change the damn city. And the first thing they said, every one of them, cut the budget. Not by ten grand or eighty grand or a hundred grand, by a million. Cut the budget. And there's so much waste in this city. It's totally ridiculous. And that's all I gotta say. I mean, I've read the budget. And you can go line item by line item. There's four or five, three, there's at least two in the police department alone that says weapons and equipment, four thousand. Weapons and equipment, eighteen thousand. Weapons and, how many weapons and equipment do we need?
ISIS is coming.
You know, and, I mean, and, and you go through each budget and there's the same thing. It's like, okay, we, we want this big budget, so we're gonna put this miscellaneous in and this miscellaneous in. Skip the miscellaneous. Cut your staff. Do something. You got three people that collect water bills here and they can't even put my number in correctly to get their money. I get a letter four months later saying you didn't pay your water bill. I mean, really? It, you know, it's just, there's a lot more in the city, in this off, in these offices here. They're not being watched, not being cared for, not being taken care of. You don't need an assistant to an assistant to an assistant. Hire a secretary that's good. Hire CPA right out of college if you can get it for less money than we pay the one we have now. And you've got somebody that can go to accounting and do the job. You know? And I mean, I, I'm, I don't care about anybody here. It doesn't matter. I am a resident here and my taxes aren't going up, thank God. But I think my taxes could go down if we cut the damn budget. We have more people working in the city here in these offices than Tarpon Springs. There's four times our size.
I have heard that before.
Yeah. So I'm just saying, cut the budget.
Let me ask you a question. I've asked around here, where did you get your figures on the Tarpon staff versus us? Because I can't even, I don't even know how many people we have working for us.
Well, you can count how many people we have. There's like fifty-seven or something. I think Tarpon Springs has twenty-four. They put it in the paper. They put a big picture of everybody in the city.
Vince is every staff member, their, their job description from A to Z and maybe...
They're not, they're not in the budget. You can't tell who makes what, where, why, or who...
Well, you can if you're Nancy. But I can't. And the other thing I'd make for, if you all are reading this, this TIF share apparently, Jim, can you explain that again?
Give my best, correct me here and if I'm wrong. I think the mayor's referring to the expense of TIF, right? You're looking at the expense?
Yeah, I'm looking at nine twenty-five, not that it matters. It comes up and down.
Expense or revenue?
I am in expenditure.
So he's looking at the general funds expense of the TIF share to the CRA. What happens is the CRA had a sixteen years ago, whatever that base year was, you understand what a TIF is? So any, anything more than what that tax rate was back sixteen years ago, if you live in the county, in other words, if you live in this, that's the money for our own city residents coming back to us is revenue. We pay it over to the, to the CRA. That's our TIF. The other portion, so there's two major revenue sources. I'm doing this off the top of my head in the CRA. One is our own money coming back and one is county residents' money, correct? I'll show you. In other words, here, look. Where is it in the CRA budget? Make it a little easier to explain, though.
It's on page six of the CRA.
Oh, it's in the other, it's in here. Right. So the way to explain that is you look at the CRA budget and you look at first page, one of its page six, do you see it there? It's page six of the CRA budget, bottom left-hand corner.
Okay.
Now, if you look at the line three, one, 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 zero, the first one, it says ad valorem. You look to the right, you see five hundred and fifty thousand, one hundred and twenty dollars. This is revenue to the CRA. So that's the county residents giving us their TIF share. And then the next line is our own residents giving us the TIF share. Fair statement.
Okay.
So that's where we get the nine hundred and...
And so our total CRA is nine sixty-six oh four four?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So, but so...
So you see it comes in from two sources. So what they do is they give it to the general fund and we pay it over to the CRA.
But when we say we're, we went down from sixteen percent, uh, CRA to thirteen percent, that's inaccurate because it's just restated as TIF.
Number of employees, sir. Percentage of employees.
Percentage for salaries for employees.
Right. We reduced the number of salaries.
Salaries to employees dropped by three percent.
Correct.
Yeah, this is just revenue to the CRA, which you're questioning.
We decreased the salaries to employees from the CRA by three percent?
Right.
Yes.
We decreased.
Well, that is not a lot. I mean, you know, uh...
We went from sixteen percent to thirteen percent. That's three percent. And, and that's the first crack we've had at it. This is the first budget we're putting together. This is the, this is the first reduction from the CRA that this community has had in several years. We're running as fast as our little legs will carry us.
It's the first time.
Vince, what I'm saying, and, and we're gonna pass this budget. We already know that. But to say that we went down three percent, that means from my last calculations, we were at ninety-eight percent going to other things. So we're now at ninety-five percent. And I don't think that's where the CRA money needs to go. And, and just his last statement is, we're running a city on CRA funds, on grants, on red lights, which we're gonna eventually lose, and we need to be working within what we can really count on, which is ad valorem.
If you were to work solely on ad valorem, I assure you that the individuals in that audience would re, would resent the tax increase that would occur. I assure you of that. Previous administrations have managed to artificially manipulate the tax that, that citizens pay by taking money from the CRA. This is the first endeavor that we have had to begin to reduce the money that is being utilized from CRA to ad valorem. I intend to eventually reduce that number significantly. This is the first opportunity that we've had to address the issue. And, and I assure you that everything that is done with respect to those funds currently meets every lawful requirement. The issue is how much money can you put back in the CRA? And that's exactly what we're trying to do by reducing the staff load on CRA. So we've been moving it to ad valorem and we've been picking it up by virtue of, of endeavors coming from our building, our growth and several other areas. And, and at the same time, we're taking into consideration the, the potential reductions coming outside of our control. But you can't, you can't bite this elephant all at once. You gotta take it piece by piece. And that's exactly what we're beginning to do. I assure you, I assure you, we don't want to continue to burden CRA. We want to use the CRA funds appropriately. That's what we were doing back in two thousand and four. And that's what we're gonna be doing back very shortly. You can't do it all at once.
I know that. And I understand your dilemma. I really do. I'm just trying to let the public see that we have grown with monies that we don't really generate. And we have taken those monies out of where they were supposed to go and hired staff or whatever we've done.
Yes, sir.
So we should be running this thing, or we should be endeavoring to run this thing on grants, ad valorem.
Correct.
Why did you get me started on this, Mr. Rowe?
Well, a couple of points I'd like to make. Ad valorem, for one, used to be a lot higher than it is today. Also, during the time, well, because of the, the values of the homes, they dropped significantly. We took a huge reduction in ad valorem. Also, we took a thirty-plus, about a thirty percent reduction in staff during that time.
Yes, sir.
So these people are running on empty. And I'm telling you what, if you, does anybody really know what this young lady over, that little young lady over there can do? What kind of work she puts out? She, she, she does a lot of work in this city.
She does, absolutely.
So, you know, you gotta, you gotta look at what she's...
So how did we get along? And I'm not knocking you, Jocelyn. How did we get along when we didn't have one?
We had a different, if I'm, if I'm a mayor. We had a different position at the time. It was Mr. Lou Colini. Lou Colini essentially worked as an, an implementer. He did ex, not exactly, because she does more, what Dr. Jocelyn Martinez does. Endeavor to research for, for grants, endeavors to, to work with other agencies to, to benefit this community. She's a fountain of knowledge and she's, she, she has an impeccable record as far as I can see. The issue of, of what her function is, is an entirely different operation. If you wish to discuss that, we can discuss at a later date. But what I have been, been attempting to do is to reduce the tax burden upon our citizens. I only managed to get it down by a fraction this time. And I got, I was able to do that based on four or five different issues. And I'm looking forward to a further reduction in the future, including a further reduction in the staff load on CRA. But you went through a horrible period of time here after two oh eight, when, when there was a tremendous economic downturn. The availability of grants, uh, weren't available at that point in time. They still are, there's extremely difficult to apply for grants and to go through the modern grant process is a nightmare. But essentially what is happening is that we have, we are now beginning to seriously address what is perceived to be their taxes. And their taxes are made up of several different major components. And you have to simply juggle those components to come up with a viable mechanism to keep this community going, which includes being able to pay the police, pay the fire in adequate numbers of each, pay for those employees out there draining, draining lift stations and cleaning culverts to, to prepare, prepare for new growth. We have a meeting coming up next week with Avila Bay for, uh, to reopen that project. You can't do it understaffed. You, you just, your sit, your city, if you, if you reduce staff appropriately, will die on the vine just when we are about to make significant inroads in our future. We just got the DMMA. We're getting ready to dredge. Our entire perspective is going to change. We have to work through this. And, and what, as Councilwoman Sorrell has indicated, this is the basic framework. We can make adjustments within this framework. If I need more money for, for, for Public Works and U2, I have to come, and it's not in the budget, I have to come here and say, I need to make a budget change. And this is the reasons why. If I need more police, more police equipment, besides those four or five line items, I have to come here and say, I don't have it in this budget. I need to make significant budget changes. And that's exactly what will happen. I, I'm not an independent creature. I work under your direction. You give me the authority, the charter gives me authority to do what I, what I'm attempting to do here. You will get a legal opinion with respect to the, the declaration of that position. And then you can make a decision with respect to that position itself. Whether I call Dr. Martinez an assistant city manager or whether I call Jocelyn Mart, Dr. Jocelyn Martinez a grants writer, are two different issues. Grants writer is not spelled out in the charter, but we had one under Lou Colini. There are certain latitudes given to administration in order to function. We can discuss those issues at a later date. This is simply a framework to move the city forward.
Well, don't get hard.
I'm sorry. I tend to get...
Are you recommending Jocelyn for city manager?
I think she would be an excellent city manager.
I do, too.
But that's not the point. I think she would be an excellent city manager.
I just had to put some levity in this.
I'm sorry, but I, I...
All right, let's move on.
Okay.
Moving on.
But there is an important thing in here, Nancy, and I'll, I'll move us on when I'm ready. We have got to be pointing toward working as if we, as if we had no CRA, as if we had no grants, unless we have an absolute, we're gonna have it. Now, if the county ever decide, and I don't believe we are gonna have it, for what is it, five more years, Jim?
Twenty, twenty-four.
Yeah, and I doubt from the legislation that's pending that if there's anti-CRA legislation pending, they have to do away with it.
So that, that's my point. We have to run this city on ad valorem and grants and...
Mayor, you're a hundred percent correct. Mayor, you're a hundred percent correct. And, and on top of that, we will have to run the community when there is a reduction in homestead exemptions. And I'm, I'm attempting to plan for that. There, this Hillsborough County alone is, is reducing their staff by five hundred employees. I'm sure Newport Ritchie, whose, whose taxes start out at, what, nine plus mils, they're almost up at the cap. This community is blessed that it is at five point seven five, and you're about to make it one eight, which is a reduction from five point seven five five seven. I'm sorry if I, if I sound over passionate about the issue, but I am.
I like passion. And I don't want to be like no place, really. I want to be like Port Ritchie.
Yes, sir.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 With reservation?
Yay.
We will look through. Okay.
No problem.
Let's go. All right, we got all of the problems out on that one. Stormwater budget, resolution seventeen eleven. Jim, please go.
I'm gonna do the utilities budget, uh, seventeen twelve. The mayor, I didn't do that one yet, did I?
We've already done, we've already done a lot.
No, we're at utilities.
You did a lot, you gotta do twelve, right?
We did, gotta do twelve.
Okay. Resolution seventeen dash twelve. This is the utility fund budget. A resolution by the city council of the city of Port Ritchie, Florida, setting forth the utility fund budget for the fiscal year commencing October first, twenty seventeen through September thirtieth, twenty eighteen. Looking for a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion, second. Anyone in the audience like to speak the best? Go.
I just have a question.
You had something, please.
I just have a, Chad Jassic, fifty-one thirty-four Miller Bayou. Just a question. I had heard from one of my...
I had heard from one of my neighbors or other people, is there, is there a thousand dollar a day expenditure for that department for tools or necessary equipment, a thousand dollars a day?
Never heard of anything like that.
Yeah, I just wanted, I don't know if that was.
No, sir.
What do you, what, for what?
For, I don't know, miscellaneous expenses for, for tooling, for parts, for whatever.
That equates to approximately three hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars and I assure you it's not in the budget, sir.
I don't see the budget, that's why he had to ask, I thought that was ridiculous, but I just wanna get that confirmed, thank you.
Anyone else like to make any comments? Okay, we're on the utilities budget, I haven't found it yet. Jim, did you already do your thing?
Yes.
We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor? Didn't we have a motion and a second?
Yeah.
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We're gonna go through this a little quicker than before. Stormwater budget, resident, resolution seventeen thirteen, page forty-five.
Resolution seven, resolution seventeen dash thirteen is the stormwater budget. A resolution by the City Council of the City of Port Ritchie, Florida, setting the stormwater utility fund budget for the fiscal year commencing October first, twenty seventeen through September thirtieth, twenty eighteen, looking for a motion.
Motion to approve seventeen dash thirteen, resolution.
Second.
Oh, but, okay, only one comment. Vince, how much did we turn this around, I know it's significant.
This is stormwater, this is a different issue and it was a previous one utilities. We turned it from over fifteen hun, fifteen hundred dollars a, a day to under ten, under ten dollars a day.
Okay, I should've told you, that, that was an adequate one, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Seventeen fourteen, Jim?
Resolution seven, thank you, resolution seventeen fourteen, this is the Penny Fappasco budget. A resolution by the City Council of the City of Port Ritchie, Florida, setting the Penny Fappasco budget, capital improvement plan for the fiscal year commencing October first, twenty seventeen through September thirtieth, twenty eighteen, looking for a motion.
A motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Public, back to council, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Passes unanimously and I believe that gets us to.
We need to adjourn this one and convene CRA, sir.
Okay, Nancy?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Hold on a minute before we, I can't.
You can't, you have a second.
Second, did you get a second?
I just got it.
You were there.
Oh.
You don't? All in favor?
You can do CRA.
Can we go right in?
Yeah, you can convene CRA, yeah.